Okay, thank you. We're live and we're here on Tuesday, January 16, 2018. Happy New Year to everyone, our first meeting of the new year. And I'll call the meeting to order and off we go. Our first matter is an informal hearing for a pending application. This is the Tavo Development LLC. This is an application for a re-subdivision plat, lot line amendment, tree removal permit, wetlands permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 15 Heathcote Drive. I hope you brought your 2018 thumb drive and not that 1957 one. Great, there we go. Gregor Sabrina can probably instruct you on getting it larger.
Pull that arrow down. You're at 13.36, 25 percent, 33. To the right of that, Michael, is an arrow.
The 33.3 percent? Up, look, up top.
Up, 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 up. To the right.
We'll clap when you get closer. There you go.
Pull that down.
Damn engineers.
Use the arrows in the back, on the side that pull them.
Funny little hand. All right, good. Great.
Okay, we've done everything that they asked us to do. We redid the driveway. We did it with vertical curves and we recreated the driveway slightly so that we could use the vertical curves. But otherwise, everything is pretty much the same plan. There were some differences between the planting plan, the integrated plot plan, and we've straightened all that out. Everybody matches everybody. Everybody's the way it's gotta be. We are right now in front of the DEP. We have a letter to them and we sent them down some hard copies or we brought them down some hard copies so they wouldn't have to try to get it through the computer. And at that time, she felt everything was gonna be fine. We're not gonna be doing any mechanical work at all within the wetlands. We are planting, but everything has to be done by hand. We'll be removing the old driveway, the gravel of the old driveway, but it has to be done by hand. It can't be done by machine. We can't mess around. Anything outside the grading limits, we can't mess around and try to put a machine into. So we're gonna be doing that all by hand.
And I guess we can, Sabrina, I guess we can condition our permits that way, right? Is that what we normally do?
We always do.
You can, yes.
Fine.
Other than that, everything is exactly what you've been looking at all this time. It's just we had things that we had to tighten up so that everyone was happy. And I think we're there now. So we're ready to go. What we would like to do is go to a public hearing next time and also, oh, and also have the resolution ready so that we can move on from there. Because we've been at this for a while.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sabrina, you have a memo on this?
Yes, and, you know, as Michael had indicated, they have addressed all my comments as opposed to the last time that they were to be before you. One of the things that your board needs to do is declare your intent-to-be lead agency, which has a tolling period. So, you know, unless the applicant wants to delay with their public hearing until your tolling period expires, then I don't know that it's possible to do everything all at once like they're suggesting.
Right. That tolling is what, 30 days, is it not, plus mailing?
Correct.
Okay. Any open issues?
No open issues.
Okay. Bob, did you have any open issues?
I still have comments that, you know, can be put in the resolution, which can be conditions. As Michael stated before, obviously, the biggest item is with the no jurisdiction letter from DEP. Because anytime they're doing work in the wetlands, it's considered disturbance. However, in speaking to Mary Galasso last week, she says if everything's by hand, they don't consider that to be included in with the two-acre overage. That's critical, though. That can be a condition. Obviously, one acre's disturbance is more, so I have to get the DEC permit as well. Data sheets I got, they just have to keep track of the correct amount of CULTEX. I had discussions with Michael. They will be increasing, so they have to be put on the plan as well. G1, G2, basically with retaining wall, they wanna use a stone wall for the guide rail. If that's the case, it has to be structural designed to make certain take the loading for a car heading into it, which is more structural. So that's G1, G2 would have to be before BP. G3 is just technical items for the profile. And obviously, they gotta get a street opening permit from Public Works for the connection of the improvements. Regarding the subdivision plat, they still have to submit agreements to Jennifer regarding the water main easements for those two locations along Heathcote Drive. These can all be conditions of approval. Either before BP, plat signing, or CL.
Okay, good. Steve, you had some comments?
We worked with the applicant and all of the tree replacement issues have finally been addressed. And the only outstanding item is they still need to submit a five-year maintenance and monitoring bond and plan. And that could be a condition of the building permit or signing, you know, the linen.
Is that for the maintenance, Steve?
That would be for the maintenance.
Yeah, that's always prior to a CL.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can do it then as well, yeah.
And we're okay on the trees, the replacements?
Yeah, what they're doing is, yeah, they finally have 100 percent replacement, you know, onsite, which is good.
Do we have, is any of that off in the wetland buffer as well?
Yeah, there's a few trees, if you look on the plan, that are included within the wetland buffer. And the location made sense to provide, you know, some habitat and some screening, you know, capability.
Great, okay. Any other que-- do you feel that you've maximized what we can't do for the pool and escort locations?
Yeah, I think we've done a good job of, you know, reducing, you know, the number of trees that had to be removed and, you know, by relocating and, you know, shifting things so that it, you know, I feel that at least they're, you know, restoring and keeping, you know, the diversity that's there.
Okay, good. Les, anything outstanding at this point? It was confusing in the beginning, but I think that we changed the application.
Yes, I think we resolved those a few months ago. As Sabrina pointed out, the first action step would be authorizing staff to circulate a notice of intent-to-be lead agency and if you wish to schedule a public hearing beyond that 30-day period.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, questions, board members?
No.
If not, is there a motion to circulate the notice of intent-to-be lead agency that's been drafted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Janice, when would we be able to schedule a public hearing after that?
March 6. March 6.
Okay. March 6. Any materials, any changes? Are there any changes that we're anticipating or do we have the materials as is? If so, I just wanna make sure that they know of the cutoff date.
February 12.
Okay.
March 6, public hearing.
Do we need a resolution for the public hearing? And the resolution that--
I don't think so. But do, are we, Sabrina, how do you feel about the having the resolution ready? Do you have enough information, material?
You know, I think that if all of the conditions are satisfied and, you know, both Steve and Bob agree, we could potentially have a draft resolution ready as long as there aren't any substantial changes or additional information that needs to be submitted. So I'll defer to Bob and Steve to answer that.
As far as my memo, I'd like to get all this CULTEX straightened out on the map before Mr. Kirkwood signs a plat.
Well, there's gonna be a couple of more steps. We haven't, I mean, the op-- one of the options was to waive jurisdiction. We didn't do that. So I think we're then into the preliminary and final approval. So this would be preliminary approval.
So we have, okay. There're gonna be a couple more steps. Yeah, okay.
Well, if that's preliminary, then it's okay. They can all go on that. They said it'll be adjusted by prior to the final. And I have no objection to all of these going into that.
Okay. You're okay with that, Steve? So if that's the case, do we wanna have, why don't we do two things then? Have a resolution to schedule this for a public hearing on March 6? Is that fair? Do we have a motion on that?
Motion to schedule public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do we have a motion then to direct staff to prepare a preliminary draft resolution for that meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you then. Okay, that's easy. Okay, we move now to our next item, and this is also an informal hearing for a pending application. It's Bughnaki Ilert, application for a site plan for accessory apartment, a wetlands
Good evening. Jerry Darick, the landscape architect, site planner for the project. I'm here with the owner, Merrick Bughnagi.
Want to increase that, raise it up? I think it's down pretty low for you. Okay.
Merrick Bughnagi is the owner. He's here this evening with us. And Alan Pilch is the project engineer, and he's with us. This project was reviewed with the planning board last April. And at that time, the project has, it has quite a long history because what we're here for is really two, two things. This is the main residence. It's a large property. It's about a 13-acre property. There's a cottage in disrepair here. He has a barn. There's a swimming pool. There's a garden in this area, and there's a pond system here with a wetland system. We got involved back in '16 when it was, there was some unauthorized work in the, in the wetland buffer. And so we went and we took the project to the ERB and we remedied that work where we were doing things, additional plantings and stream corridor restorations and mitigation, taking out invasives on the pond and working on that. And at that time, prior to that, the Bughnakis approached the building department and they wanted to rebuild their cottage. And it was felt that they needed to go and talk to the ZBA. And the ZBA felt it was too close to the road. It's only about nine feet off of the road. So through discussions with the ZBA, they went through the ZBA and they were granted a variance and to push it back about 35 feet. So it was gonna be about 40 feet off of the, it was gonna be about 40 feet off of, off of Vales Lane. And-- So I just wanted to remind the board that we're talking about the entire site and we have some wetland remediation work going around the pond and around the back of the property. But the, I think the subject that is, needs a little more clarification with the planning board is the location of the cottage. So this is the location of the existing cottage. As I said, it's very close to Vales Lane. This is the location that it was approved to be moved back per the ZBA approval. That is the plan that we took to the ERB and went through several meetings with the ERB until we finally agreed on mitigation. Subsequent to that, there was some clearing done in this area, which was gonna be part of the mitigation anyway. So the application went forward. Once this area got cleared out, the owners realized it would be advantageous. They felt to push it up the slope a little bit. So what we're doing now is, what you're seeing in red is, is what's different from what you saw in, in April of '17. And what happened is we, we pushed the building back another 10 feet. The result is, and where I think the balance has to be struck here is that per the ZBA location, it was about 80 feet to the wetland line. And at this point, it's about 70 feet to the wetland line. We feel that we can provide adequate mitigation to offset that. And we think there's some real benefits to this being back a little bit farther. Number one, Alan's gonna talk a little bit about the stormwater and how getting the building up a little higher in elevation makes it a little easier to get the stormwater to run to the rain garden. What we also did, what was different, if you recall, we had two parking spaces here with about 160-foot walkway here. And the planning board asked, why don't we put some parking next to the building? And that was a very good suggestion. So we've done that now, and we brought it in on this side. The septic is right here. We do have a reuse permit from the Health Department. The cottage will get its domestic water supply from the water main in Vales Lane, and Alan will be handling that with the Water Department as the project moves forward. Also, if you hit that little arrow, yeah, you'll get more screen. This was really the topic that we've just been talking about. This, this was our actual mitigation plan, which was all fleshed out with, with plantings. Everything was done when we realized that we needed to come back to the planning board. But one of the things that's happening here is, as part of this planting, you'll notice, what we're proposing is, is to plant kind of a hedgerow all along Vales Lane to get some, there's a neighbor right over here who has written a letter in support of the project to the board, who would love to see this thing renovated and pushed farther back. But if we can get that extra 10 feet, we think that'll just help us to get more plantings in this area, get a little more separation distance between the cottage and Vales Lane. You know, I think, get a little more privacy and get it closer to a zoning compliant layout. So what, what's happening here, again, this is by way of background. This is what we showed you guys in, in April. We're gonna be looking at the site plan for this now, but this is what we're gonna be talking about tonight, is where we wanted to move this. So this is the back part of the property, just to remind the board that this is also part of the application. This is where some, the unauthorized clearing had taken place down in this area. So as you can see, we're proposing evergreen buffer plantings on the property line. We're proposing to, to renovate this, this water course. Right now, it's, you know, it's more like a ditch. So what we're gonna do is comb back the, we're gonna be combing back the edges. We're gonna be stabilizing it with rocks and native plantings and make more of a riparian edge. There's a bunch of invasive briars and vines in this area, and the owners would like to have that more of a view to their ponds. So what we're doing is kind of a short meadow mix with scattered, scattered native shrubbery through here. And the other thing we had was, was a series of trails. Again, it's a 13-acre property, so they'd like to be able to kind of walk through the trails for passive recreation. And this is the garden, and we are proposing a new fence because the deer have been killing his garden. So we'd like to put in a new sturdy fence around that. His fruit trees are in. He'd like to have, you know, some other beds for, you know, in a little potting area that he could do that. This is the site plan, and maybe if you try to do it a little bit better. Talk about a little bit longer here. These were the, these were the locations. What we had, this is the original cottage. It was nine feet off of Vales Lane. What we're seeing here in the red hatch, that was the plan that the, the ZBA approved. And this is the location that the planning board saw back in April of '17. At that point in time, we had about 80 feet to the wetland line. At this time, what we're proposing is to move it back 10 feet and at a slightly higher elevation. And what that does, it gets it 70 feet to the wetland line. We did discuss this with the ERB, and they felt 70 to 75 feet was an appropriate number based on the mitigation that we were gonna offer. When we also met with the ERB, we also showed them a plan that Alan had prepared that was a zoning compliant plan. And, you know, so we would put the building behind the 75-foot setback, but that got the, that got the back of the building within 40 feet or so to the wetland line. The ERB thought that was just too close, and so that was dismissed. So really, I think what we're talking about tonight, this is what the planning board looked at in April. This is what we'd like to do now.
What's the wetland setback?
We're in the overlay zone, so it's 150 feet. 150 feet.
Jerry, I'm gonna have to ask you to use the microphone. It's off there.
Okay, it's a, we're in the overlay zone. It's 150 feet. And let me zoom out, and I'll show you where that line is. Pretty much the whole site is in this overlay zone. So this is the wetland line right here. This is the 150-foot setback line. So essentially, the entire area is within the wetland buffer. So what we had done in terms of the layout, we have the driveway that comes up, climbs the slope. We have the location of the proposed, the proposed cottage. This is the location that it was before. What we had done, and what we talked about the ERB, and what's, what's interesting here is that the, this area here is, is higher. There's a high point right here. This water will sheet this way, and this water will sheet this way. And, you know, the point we tried to, to, to make with the ERB, and, and we'd like to point out to the planning board, that there is no direct runoff this way right into the wetland. Because this is a hump. This is higher. On top of that, we're proposing a three-foot height stone wall. We looked at Mr. Coleman's review memo today, and I think that what he is suggesting is to provide a, more of a permanent buffer to the wetland to take this wall and tie it right into this, which we have no problem with. And that would give us a permanent, you know, a permanent three-foot height demarcation. The location of this can wall, it could fluctuate back and forth. The driveway would allow, you know, a car to back up. It's got two parking spaces. Alan will, will do some sightline studies, but Vales Lane is pretty flat and straight, so I don't see a problem with that. And again, then, what we would be able to do then is, is get a more robust planting, hedgerow planting to get some separation and privacy for the neighbors. I think it would be a better plan for the neighborhood and for the owners. And we also talked with the ERB that we would go in and further augment this planting we had done. What we had done last time was, we really had done a lot of shrubs and, and grasses. And we talked about putting in larger shrubs and putting in more trees. And what you're seeing with, I think, these darker colors were the additional trees that we were, we were gonna do. But at the end of this, I talked to Steve about this, and, you know, we will be putting together a comparison of what the, we haven't, we haven't actually done the planting plan yet. We don't wanna see, you know, get the reaction of the planning board first. But we will then show, well, this is what was reviewed and approved, at least by the ERB, and this is what we're doing now. So it'll be at least that, if not more. We also have an erosion control plan that, you know, all this standard stuff, redundant measures and, and that. And I think I also have a copy of the architecture here in case the board wants to see that again.
Well, I had a couple of questions or observations. The observation is that, I know it's been portrayed that this was shown to us last April. But I don't think showing it to us should generate the assumption that we were on board with it and liked it. So that is, you know, with all respect to ERB, I think more information here is necessary. I'd like to know what the delta is between these various proposals that you've got before us in terms of impacts to buffers. So if we were to take reconstruction on the same exact site where the current cottage is, what are the impacts to the wetland buffers at that point? The proposal that we looked at last April, what were the impacts to the buffers then? And then what is the proposed impact to the so-called preferred application this evening? My sense is that there is a significant increase in, in impacts to the buffer with your current proposed plan. And, you know, this is not uncommon. We're, we're, we find ourselves in this kind of situation always dealing with zoning compliance and also environmental concerns. So I'm not so sure one is more important than the other, but they certainly have to be weighed. And I think this board takes the environmental issues very, very seriously. It's nice to know things fit within measurements, but the environmental issues are important. Steve, I don't know, where does this wetland ultimately flow? Is this Indian Brock? Is it Croton? Is it Hudson? What is this part of the system?
This system is part of the Hudson. Yeah, it flows to the Hudson.
So this is not a public watershed in terms of drinking?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
One, one point of clarification is the environmental board, when they reviewed, you know, the location, the primary reason that they were willing to consider 70 to 75 feet was because of the contours to allow gravity flow to the stormwater. At the time, there was not a detailed stormwater analysis, and the stormwater practice that they were proposing was much higher up and, you know, closer to the wetland edge. And by, when we saw this plan, you know, that's why I suggested that they should go back to the environmental board also, because the stormwater practices are now lower on the slope. So it makes it easier to accomplish, you know, the gravity, you know, flow of runoff, you know, to that system. And it also pulls the disturbance a little further away from the wetland buffer area.
Well, I think it's important also to recall that this is an application for an accessory use. It's not a primary use. And my sense is, just me, is it's a big ask for an accessory use in terms of potential impacts to wetlands and to buffers. So I guess that information in terms of what the difference in terms of impacts are in terms of dimensions would be interesting.
Sure.
On, when you said you shifted it 10, you, you guys went in, you had it originally located at one spot, you did some invasive removals, and you decided-- at one spot, you did some invasive removals, and you decided, oh, well, let's shift it back 10 feet. When you made that decision, were you trying to avoid a rock-out crop or save some mature trees? Was there a reason other than just let's shift it back? Was there something on the site that you were trying to maintain?
Yes. When, this particular wetland buffer was a mess. It was your standard briars, I mean, you couldn't even walk through it. It was that bad, it was that thick. And once it was cleaned out, then the owner said, wow, look at that. We have this little plateau area here. It's kind of high up on a rock, it kind of raises up, because what happens is, there's kind of a broad swale right through here. Kind of, right through here is a broad swale. And when they looked at it and said, wouldn't it be nice to kind of push it back up and get it up closer to that plateau, and, you know, get it a little bit out of, you know, where the drainage wave is, is out of the swale? And then, you know, then we said, well, that would give us, you know, an extra 10 feet. Maybe we can get some more planting in here, and maybe we can, you know, thicken up that hedgerow to provide some more separation to Vale's Lane. So I think that's what drove the decision. Merrick, is that accurate?
Yes, especially there is a ledge right at the beginning of the 40 feet. Good evening. I'm Merrick Bunnacki, owner of 16 Inningwood Road. As Jerry mentioned, there is a rocky ledge right where the initial approval of 41 feet was. So it's very inconvenient to put up a structure right on the ledge where 10 or 15 feet further into the wetland. We have perfect placement for something like this size of a cottage. Also, I have another question, very important. What is the exact definition of the overlay district? Is there any specific term that, why is it applicable to me that I'm in the 150-feet buffer zone?
Well, it's defined in the town code, and the town code has defined certain areas. So the overlay, when it was adopted many years ago, 15 years ago, some properties were in it. It was deemed to be, I think, more environmentally sensitive, and that's why the town board adopted legislation that expanded the protection of the wetlands to 150 feet.
Is there any specific location of the, in Newcastle that is?
Oh, yeah. It's all mapped out in terms of what the overlay district looks like, yeah.
Where is that map available to me?
It's available at Town Hall, and it's coterminous with the two-acre zone on the east and west ends of town.
What defines the east and west coast?
Just location, geographic location.
Well, I have not been able to find any specific map on the town site that defines my location as a overlay buffer district zone.
Well, because you're in the R2-acre zone, it's automatic that you're in the overlay.
Well, we have quite a few examples of applications that were approved by ERB within the vicinity of our location, and they are over two acres. And they were not treated with a 100 buffer zone setback. A recent one, how about Campfire Road Development?
That's not in the environmental overlay district.
Well, according to my engineer, I'm in the Pocantico River Basin.
That's a different watershed. It's not specific to the environmental overlay district.
Campfire Road seems to be in the same district. It's listed on the submissions of?
It's in an R1-acre zone.
If I could just say, there, I understand that you, apparently you disagree with the designations, and you haven't been able to find the document that actually, I guess, is clear on this. I suggest to you, it's here somewhere in Town Hall. If you want to come and make an appointment and show up, I'm sure that that would be explained, and that document would be made available to you. So I don't think there's any question on this board that that document exists and that you fall within it. So if you have a dispute with that, I think that that's?
I don't have a dispute. I'm just curious to find out what's the definition of the 150-feet buffer zone, and why is it applicable to me, not to others?
Well, it's applicable to me, too.
Me, too.
I mean, I've got a pond, and it's applicable to me, too, so.
Notice that, yes.
Okay, so, and he's got a pond, so, a lot of ponds, and there are a lot of ponds on Inningwood Road, and every one of those ponds has the same restriction. So it's not personal to your particular property.
Well, I kind of feel like, because my neighbor, which is on the same pond on the other side, had an approval for building a pool, and it's within 100 feet buffer zone versus 150, and he's at the same location right next to me.
So if I could just suggest, nobody has yet denied you an approval to do anything. Can I just, let me just finish. We are going through the process to understand what your application request is, and I don't think any of us have said that you are going to be denied. Those applications that have been approved went through the same process.
I'm not saying that.
So that's the reason why?
I understand you have a lot of work to do and make a decision, but I would like to clarify that, I guess, buffer zone in the first place, just to see where I am exactly, because I wasn't able to find it on any of the maps that were available to me through the access to the?
Fair enough. That's the R2A zone, but where's the language that attaches, that attaches the buffer restriction to that? So this language in the code?
There's an actual code within the zoning code, that's the environmental protection overlay district.
And it's coterminous with, it's coterminous, contiguous with?
It looks like, it looks like we are in the buffer zone, yes.
Merrick is right. He is, he is right on it. His neighbor behind him is out of it. He's in the one-acre zone, so.
Right.
Derby Lane is behind you, and Derby Lane?
It's a one-acre.
So you happen to be right on the line. Here's your neighbor, Tom's house, right here.
Yes, I see it. Now I see it, but it's okay. Now, the next question is, why some residents in the R2A zone are allowed to rebuild their structures or expand their pools even being in that zone?
I don't know what the sense of your question is. I mean, they, let me?
Well, it's about your neighbor, Tom?
No, I?
Tom is in a different zoning, but?
No, I'm in the same zone.
Oh.
But they go through this process as well.
Which you're going through now.
Which you're going through now. When they don't go through this process, it often gets discovered by the town, and it gets, they get called on it by the town, and sometimes there are violations that are assessed against those people. But every one of those people goes through the process. And I know for a fact that my neighbor, who we don't need to mention, but our neighbor who is going through the process right now to do some work on the pond, is going through the ERB to do it.
Okay. I'm just waiting for the outcome. I hope it's positive. We've been trying to solve this issue for quite a few months. I've been getting different opinions from different people involved in the process, back and forth, including our, I guess, architect that we started working with at the very beginning, when he was presenting our case to the architectural review board, his indication was 100 feet from the wetlands. He was not aware of the buffer zone that is applicable to us, which is 150 feet. So there was no mention of that until the next step took place, which was zoning board meeting, and then we got the variance of 41 feet without knowing what's in the area that has been overgrown for years, breeding ground for, I guess, every animal out there. Okay, I guess I?
No, that's the town's. I think it's Janice's.
You can get a copy of it somewhere.
Sure. Is it online? It must be online, isn't it?
No.
Nope.
You can request a copy at the town clerk's office, and one will be made available.
And why don't, Janice, you can show him the title and the date and everything, so he gets the right?
And I think just to establish the context, the town has approved legislation that basically says, within wetlands and buffers within these areas and within these zones, a 150-foot setback in this particular area, it really starts off by saying that activities are prohibited in there. And what happens is people apply for permits for exceptions from that, and that's what this process is. So basically, as it stands now, without a permit, without an application, you would be prohibited from doing the things that have been done on the property and rebuilding the structure. So it's an application for a permit to do something that the town does not want to have done. So basically, you start off with that context, and it's an exception to it. That's what the permit process is all about. It's kind of backwards from perhaps what most people think it should be, but it's the way it goes. Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Alan Pilch, the engineer on the project. I'll just sort of review what the stormwater plan is. And so essentially, what we've done here is where the new cottage location is on this application. The runoff from the roof of the new cottage building would be conveyed by subsurface pipes to a drainage swale, a vegetated swale, and runoff from a good portion of the gravel driveway that's being proposed, well, actually, flow-by-sheet flow into the rain garden. And I'll just say, it was a real challenge to find a location to construct a rain garden, because as Merrick pointed out, and also as Jerry pointed out, what I certainly observed is that this area is a big mound of rock, and the rock is fairly close to the surface in a lot of places. You know, there was one spot further up around here where we did find, oh, two and a half, maybe three feet of soil, but it's not much. But fortunately, in this location, further away from the wetland, we did find a location where the soils were pervious, and the groundwater table was four to four and a half feet below grade. And we were able to provide a rain garden in this location with at least three to three and a half feet separation between the bottom of the rain garden and the water table. And one of the concerns that I would have from this plan, knowing the difficulty of just finding a location to treat stormwater runoff, of even moving it forward by 10 feet, is that the grades just permit, I would say, the upper portion of the gravel driveway and the building to be conveyed at minimum slope into this rain garden, and moving it forward, there's quite a grade change from about 516 to about 520 here, so it's four feet over a short distance. Moving it forward will just complicate that, to be able to convey runoff into the rain garden. So we do have a situation where?
But what did you do? What was your, in the proposal from April 2017, what was your solution for stormwater and spillage off the roof, et cetera?
There wasn't one at that time, not for me. It was in September.
Okay.
When I got involved in this. And, you know, we did a lot of probing just to sort of figure out where to capture and treat this runoff, so we could provide water quality treatment and, you know, peak-grade attenuation. And this plan does do that. And I'll just say, you know, you can sort of see the way the contour is slightly bow out here to provide, you know, I'll say, an even grade up to the proposed cottage location. But by even moving it forward 10 feet, it starts to compromise that relationship between here and there, and it would be a concern for the function of the rain garden if it was for it to be depressed further into the, you know, to the, I'll say, if the bottom of it was closer to the groundwater table, because you really do need a reasonable separation between the bottom of a rain garden for treatment purposes and, you know, and the water table. And with this design, we were able to provide both water quality treatment and actually peak-grade attenuation from the 1-200-year storm is provided as well, and, you know, we provided a SWIP report in support of this. So, you know, that's, this to me, not just, I don't need to sort of compromise, it's a logical location. There's a lot of separation, as Jerry pointed out, you know, from the destruction of the low wall, which I know Steve wants to extend, so that none of the runoff from this development area goes directly into the wetland. So, and so, you know, it's sort of a balance, if you will, between what elevation to put the building to make sure the runoff doesn't go into the wetland, which it doesn't, and gets fully treated. And the concern, again, is that dropping it further, because there is at least four feet of grade change between here and there, will make that much more difficult.
Okay, got it. So we're, in this conversation, we've been talking about the building footprint, but along with the building footprint goes the parking footprint as well, which also has an environmental impact. Could you, could you discuss, is that a permeable surface? What is that made of? Is it gravel? What's it to be?
It's gravel, it's permeable. So if there is runoff from it, let's say from the upper portion of it, there is a portion of the curb, it's a flush curb, it's like a Belgian block around the perimeter of it, but it's a flush curb here to permit any runoff that does occur to sheet flow into the rain garden.
So?
But the lower portion of here, correct, is permeable because it's a gravel driveway.
So unless I'm mistaken, I'm assuming that the finished elevation of the driveway and parking area is within about a foot of the finished elevation of the building?
Yes.
Roughly? Building's going to be up a foot, right?
That's right.
And so it's, and so you have to climb, you're going through this, you're going through this swale with the driveway to climb back up to the elevation of the building with the driveway?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm sorry, misunderstood. I, I'm trying to, this drawing doesn't show the finished grades yet, so I'm just trying to understand what's going on here. So we're starting low here, and we're, oh, there it is on this drawing, sorry.
Yes.
So we're climbing, these are two-foot contours?
They're one-footers.
These are ones. So we're going one, two, three?
No, no, so it's, there's, that's the 520.
Right.
That's the 518 right through here.
Right.
And that's the 516 here. There's actually a 519 in there.
All right, so it's 514 to 520?
Well, it's five, about 15, so about 520.
Okay, so we're going five feet up to get to here? So?
The existing grade here is around 520, 520, yeah, it's about 520.
Is around 520 anyway?
Yeah.
Just a detailed comment, but it seems to me for an accessory-use apartment, which is, two bedrooms?
One.
One bedroom? This is, I don't understand, two, it looks like a very big parking area for this use. And I don't, the geometries, it seems to me, are more generous than necessary in order to get in there. I would be looking, this is, the scale of this drawing is not clear. It says 1 to 20, but it's reduced, so it's about 1 to 30, I think. I don't know what the scale of this drawing is. But I think that this is about 30 feet here to here?
Well, probably more like 20, but I think there's room?
It's more like 30.
The driveway a little bit smaller. What we were trying to do is we were trying to get the car to back up and turn around. Bob, one of Bob's comments was he prefers the cars to pull out nose-first onto town roads rather than?
Sure, sure. Well, do you have a hammerhead here, so?
That's what the hammerhead was for.
But I would also suggest, I would make this wider down here, and make this narrower here, and have the turnaround here, and reduce, get more of this paved area out of there, even if it's gravel, it still is less permeable than, you know, it is naturally, and get it out.
I go up the other side?
You need, you need?
We had the parking on the other side, much smaller, but for some reason, it was not accepted by ERB.
It's okay, but this is, you know, as Bob said, the rules say no disturbance, really, no, it means to us mainly no building in that, in the wetland setback. And that's what we universally have applied for at least 15 years since it went into play. So, you know, it's like, you have a problem with the site because the original building was built before the 150-line was established, so that building is grandfathered. Okay? Okay, so we, we, it's, you know, once, if you did it and the law changed, you'd get to keep-
The same size.
The same size. And to a certain extent, that would apply to the existing cottage, you know, so that you're demolishing a smaller cottage to build a bigger building, so you're net behind. I see on the drawing a swimming pool. Is that in the ground right now or? It is. Well, when was that built?
1995, before we become almost-
95, so that's grandfathered also. 15 years?
Well, it's-
Well, it's, yeah, it's 22 years, if the date is right.
Definitely predates the overlay zone.
Okay, all right, good, so-
Been there a long time.
Yes. But you have, what's in, what do you use the barn for?
Storage of equipment, some tools.
Mm-hmm. Do you use all of it?
Pretty much so.
Yeah, that's too bad, because that also is in the exclusion zone. And I'm looking on one level just to get a sense if we can reduce the amount of pavement, we can reduce the size of the cottage, we can offset it with buildings that are going to be demolished or whatever.
There is a plan to combine the garage with the barn together.
All right, so that helps. So I'm, I'm looking for something that, otherwise I have a hard time personally agreeing to more construction in a wetland buffer.
Let me see if I can, because this is, I've been living in this neighborhood since 1992. And this property and this home and the barn, and it's unfortunate about the cottage because over time, the previous owners, they just neglected it. And it's just, it got to the, it's at the point now that it's, it really needs to be taken down because it's sort of a dangerous situation, I think. It's sort of an eyesore. So I think in that, and the property is beautiful, the homes are historic, the barn is gorgeous. I think that there's a real asset to have this property and its current buildings in the community. They really give it a nice rural character. And I think I speak for most of my neighbors for that. So I actually think that the presence of the barn and the garage and the house and even the swimming pool, even though it may be more than one would approve, or in locations that one would not approve today, I still think it works quite well on the property and is good for the neighborhood. I'm, and I understand the desire to take down the cottage, but retain the potential use of the cottage and rebuilding it. Makes sense to me. The size of it, if this is what is allowed by our zoning, the size of the accessory use, then I can have no quarrel with that myself. But I really think that there are certain things, like the size of this parking, I mean, it really needs to be looked at. Unless I'm, if that's 20 feet, then that's 60 feet. You don't need 60 feet to do this. I mean, you need 40 feet depth.
Agreed, agreed. We could certainly look at that.
Okay, I just wanted to hear you say that.
I think we can make it smaller.
Okay.
Actually, I have a question.
And I, that's not, I'm sorry, let me just finish. That's, notwithstanding anything Bob said about the environmental impacts of the location of this, I think all those comments need to be-
That'll help if we can get that down, that'll certainly help.
Need to be looked at.
Am I correct in assuming that there's another driveway that accesses the main, the main house on this property?
That's correct.
So does the town code have any provisions about opening up a second driveway cut to have two driveways on one piece of property?
It has to serve the same residence, so it's going to an accessory apartment, that would be fine.
That is a lot-
Plus, I believe it's off of two different streets.
So the other one comes off Inningwood Road? Okay.
Well, there's one off Inningwood, there's already one off Vales, so they already have two, but they're existing.
Right.
There's one coming into the, to where the barn is?
Yeah.
Right, but they're serving different residences and different uses.
So this would be opening up a third driveway onto the property?
It would, but the first two, you could say, are, this is a whole bunch of exceptions to, you know, exceptions, but-
So I understand that the, previously, the plan showed the parking at, you know, accessing through the other driveway on Vales Lane, and then the parking was at some distance-
160 feet.
-from the, from the accessory cottage. But if we are looking for ways to reduce the impact in the buffer, and it was previously acceptable to use the dry, the existing driveway on Vales, maybe we can go back to looking at that again.
And that, those two spots were out of the buffer last time around?
Well-
I think that's why they designed it that way.
So it is a walk, but it's a big piece of property, and if they're having walking trails going through these 13 acres, it's not so hard to walk 160 feet to the cottage.
Yes, that's how it works. I know, and this was a walk last year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what, yeah, yeah.
Was it the planning, were we the ones who suggested a separate driveway and parking area for this, for this building?
Yes, we did.
We didn't have it, we didn't have it in there.
Sort of self-imposed now, isn't it?
Well, but, but, well, yeah, but not, not what we have here. Again, um-
I wasn't there that day, so.
So, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, I think the thing was, I think the conversation was, what are you going to do with both hands full of groceries?
Exactly.
And it's raining and it's 160 feet to your house.
Yeah, it was kind of crazy, kind of crazy. But the other issue, I mean, we have not only just this turnaround area, but we have this whole, I hope I can do this correctly here, we have this whole area here, whereas if we just came in straight off of Vales to that side of the cottage, we will reduce buffer impacts, you know, it's just going to help your numbers and help us further. It doesn't look like the slopes are-
The elevation change.
Yeah, are going to thwart us. It looks like it's four feet, if I've got the elevation lines correct. And you've already got an area that's somewhat impacted anyway when you take down the cottage, so why not come in through, through that area and not disturb more? And it's also a direct run, shorter, less pavement, less gravel, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
And work your turnaround on the other side.
I understand where you're coming from, but there was that advantage too, you can actually have, by putting the driveway proximate to where the stormwater is-
Drains.
-convey the runoff from the driveway to the stormwater management.
But can't you take the water from there, just in a pipe, to the rain garden, not have a sheet off the driveway?
It's elevationally, it won't work.
Elevation won't work?
If you put the driveway over the cottage where it is now, you'll never get it into the rain-
Over that hump.
I understand your concern, but I'm just saying there was a reason for it.
But there's, okay, but there's much less water you have to deal with because it'll be a lesser paved area or gravelled area.
Probably none of it will get into the rain garden.
Does anything flow to the rear into the wetland from this, this area in here? Is it, is it, I wasn't quite, I was trying to figure the elevation, does it all go up?
Here's the 530 line, that's the knoll, and then this is a plateau, as I read the thing, it's, the 520 line is somewhere in here.
Right.
Essentially correct.
But does it, does anything flow backwards into the-
Yeah, anything be beyond-
Anything beyond that, that line where Mr. Brownell is showing, anything from here over goes this way, anything there goes that way. So that's kind of, this is kind of a ridge, if you will.
Right.
That's the highest point on the property.
Right.
Thirty feet.
But none of this area goes, flows this way? It flows out toward the street, out toward Vale?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it, that's not quite correct, because over here, you, you have stuff that's going this way, so it's into-
This is connected to the wetland that is drained by the brook connect being, connecting the pond and the wetland. It runs through the whole property. So any water accumulated in the wetland area right behind the cottage drains through the brook, I mean, like, you know, early spring, over the summer when we have a rainy day, and goes to the two ponds farther on the property.
Yeah.
And then trickles down to-
So it goes this way. So all of it eventually goes this way.
Well, that was the issue.
Except maybe right along the road.
Right, and I think I heard, maybe I misunderstood the statement, that this would redirect all of the water out of the wetland. I was concerned with that because you want water going until-
This is the program that cuts through the property, and then we have these two large ponds that are continuously being fed by whatever the access of water is behind the cottage on the wetland. It's being taken by the brook to the ponds and then further down the Inningwood Road, the creek around Route 100.
Bob, in terms of your question, it does drain parallel to Vales Lane and goes back into the larger wetland system.
It rolls back in.
And it goes back through to the ponds, you know, the topography works and it works its way through there.
Okay.
But it is a long route.
Yeah, it's a long route, yeah. But that's, that's beneficial for water quality.
And some of your water goes into the rain garden, which also feeds the wetland, which feeds this creek to the two ponds.
Filtration. Do we know what the separation is where you're proposing the rain garden from the, the groundwater?
Three feet.
Is it three feet, the separation?
It's about a foot.
Okay.
From the bottom to the-
To the average water table, so.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I think, you know, we'll hear from staff on this as well, but at least I think from my standpoint, I'd like to get more information in terms of what those deltas are, in terms of the buffers. The observation I make is that you're asking for a structure that is nearly double what exists now. And I understand that it meets the, it falls below the max permissible for an accessory apartment. But again, when I look at the driveway, the turnaround, the size of the building, and the pushback into the buffer, it seems to me that there are many things here that can be done to lessen the impact. Not the least of which is reducing the, you know, the footprint of the cottage, perhaps architecturally making it two stories, and I think there's an upstairs, right, a mezzanine in this is designed. And perhaps there's a full second floor, we don't have that much of a, we can reduce the footprint and still get the same size and same use.
There is a screen porch, isn't there?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with what Bob says, is that, that it, this is, a lot of, a lot of good thinking has gone into how to deal with the water, and I appreciate that. And, but we need to try and figure out how to have less of an impact, you know, on the wetland buffer, since all of the water tends to go into the wetland. So we don't need gasoline leaking or oils leaking out of a car or anything like that, or someone spilling some chemicals and then it just rains and it goes into the wetland. And so that's one of the difficulties, we're trying to protect the quality of the water, not only for aesthetic, that you use it for now, but also downstream for use, potentially for someone's water supply far away, or just for aquatic animals using it to continue with the, the whole idea of healthy, robust wetlands providing to the food chain.
For the past five years, we've been trying to improve the property, as probably some of you have noticed.
And you have.
And our intention is to just make, keep making it better. The plans were to start with the main house, the cottage was never kind of an idea for us from the very beginning. It became apparent that we have to make a decision what to do with it because we received the validation from town that it's not in compliance. And we quickly start working with the, I guess, local architect to find the best solution. And our decision was to keep it as it is, since the law allows us to expand it to 1,000 square feet, currently being under 500. It just makes perfect sense to make it larger because cost of construction for a 500-square-foot house for 1,000 is maybe 25% more than, than, for the same structure. Having it close to the road to Vales Lane was kind of a big question mark for us because it's, it's nine feet from the road. We do have heavy trucks passing by, so this is a kind of a, you know, nuisance in a sense to have it so, so close. That's why we applied to zoning board to get a variance. Once we got the 40-feet variance, we were very happy. But then, when the treaty took place last spring, we realized that there is a much, much suitable, better place, which we're trying to get the cottage a little bit farther, maybe 55 feet from Vales Lane, maybe 50 or whatever would be, I guess, suitable for the environment. I guess we have presented so many solutions how to mitigate the area. As you probably know, or some of you know, knows that this place have been in shambles and in disarray for many, many years. This particular area was pretty much a jungle. And the invasive species took over much of the property over the years.
Right, I appreciate all of that, and it really looks nice. And I hear good things from Tom about, well, this is really an improvement to the, the whole neighborhood, if I understand what Tom said. And I think that's, that's all very good, and that, I think, is something that the ZBA took into consideration and the Environmental Review Board took into consideration. And I would hope that we also take that into some consideration. But I think there are ways, I mean, the chairman suggested, well, can you go higher? I mean, I don't know how high the building is right now, whether the height to the midline of the upper roof is 35 feet or it's-
It's less.
It's less. Okay, so another way to do it would be to reduce the footprint and keep some of your open areas, but have the sleeping loft up higher. And you still get to your economics. You know, so to me, that would, that would make some sense to make the footprint smaller. Okay?
I have another question about the parking and the driveway. Does anybody recall how far the parking is for the Kupla Building?
100 feet.
Is it 100 feet or?
I think it was it within a 400 foot.
It was a 400-foot lane.
A 400-foot. I would like to suggest again that it would not be such an imposition to get rid of that second curb cut on Vales Lane to the cottage and maybe keep the parking at 160 feet distance. This is just an accessory use. We've, we're asking people at the Kupla Building, we're living there, you know, how many, 58 apartments, they're going to be walking a few hundred feet to their, to their building. I don't think it's such a big ask to keep the parking where it is, where it was originally, and reduce one of the curb cuts and, and the second parking area. So I just offer that as a thought.
Yeah, and I think that was the rendition that we, rendition we saw last April, so again, that would be part of the, the study in terms of what that delta is, in terms of impact.
Right, what that delta is.
Yep. Bob, you had comments?
Yes, I guess in light of the fact of the building and the driveway being not the best location, the stormwater plans that were submitted, overall acceptable, I did review them thoroughly, and there were really no comments I had on them other than the amount of the fee for $500 for the stormwater comments. General comments I had were very minor, indicate the location type and size of the existing water main, they're tied into it for service. But yet, I don't know whether it's on the east side or west side, that's important. The commissioner's going to need to know that too when you get your tapping permit, so I would highly recommend you call up John Migliaccio and have him mem scope the water main so you can locate our survey.
Okay.
G2, obviously you're going to be adding additional septic systems, so you have to go to the county and either have them say what you have now is good, or possibly get a new one designed. They usually give a no objection, stating that the existing septic system was satisfied.
Filed that, it's in your file.
Okay. G3, there's an existing wood fence, which is pretty dilapidated along the front, I would highly recommend that be coming on down, I believe they showed that on the plan as well. And obviously, a street opening permit and a tapping permit would be required from DPW for the temporary construction and service line connection, and that's the end of my comments.
Okay. Steve, you have, actually, a couple memos are backed up, but I guess your most recent ones, the most, is the one we should look at.
Yeah, the question I have for the board is, I did request that they come back in front of the environmental board next Monday in light of the comments, you know, to see alternatives. I'm thinking that it may be more productive to let the applicant come up with some design alternatives before they come back to the environmental board.
Might be more useful.
Just to be more efficient, you know, unless you'd like the environmental board to weigh in on some alternatives, you know, we could do that.
I'd love to have you weigh in on the alternatives as, as the applicant proposes them, sure.
Mm-hmm.
I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, because if, if the ERB says no to something, well then, okay. And if they say yes, well then, I'm sure I personally will pay more attention to it, so.
And one of the things the board, you know, always likes to see is some type of permanent demarcation, and, you know, based on the discussions with the board, they'd prefer to have that be closer, you know, and less lawn area, you know, less disturbance within the buffer. So that was one of the recommendations, to see that wall increased in length and then also pushed closer to the cottage and whatever driveway configuration, you know, occurs within that area, just to serve as an enforcement. It's an easier way to enforce, you know, future, you know, disturbance by residential activity. And unfortunately, this property does have a history of doing a lot of work without securing permits, you know, first.
So I'd like to revisit that first.
So I'd like to revisit that for a second here. When you say this property, you mean this applicant on this property?
This applicant on the property.
As, I don't have the, I don't see the specific dates, not important, but there are two instances of this happening. And the first instance, after the first instance, the applicant was notified of illegal activity. And then, later came back and did the same thing again, even though he had already been notified.
No, he was aware of the second time that that was part of the plan to restore. He went ahead and cleared that area-
Without the permit.
Without getting permits ahead of that.
Was he notified that he needed to have a permit?
Yes, he was in front of the board, so he was aware that that area was part of the wetland buffer.
Right. So, I guess-
We chose not to follow up with enforcement, because he was, at that time, was when the building inspector determined that it needed to get planning board approval for the, you know, the accessory apartment. And so we chose, because that was part of the mitigation plan, to have it come in front of your board. If you were comfortable with it, then we would not proceed with-
At what point, at what point does the ERB, or would you recommend the planning board actually say, okay, enough's enough? And deny an application, because the applicant has knowingly acted against the provisions of our code?
Well, the, the way we handled it, this, in this particular case, is, we, I presented that as an option for you to either, you know, accept that that was part of the ongoing mitigation strategy, and we would forego a violation, you know, as long as it was moving in that direction.
So the ERB recommendation, in this particular case-
We made this, in this particular case, to the planning board.
Has put it on our table.
Right. And if you felt uncomfortable with it, and said, we didn't want that, then I would have been directed to proceed with a violation, and we would have, you know, treated it as a violation and required the remediation.
So it's sort of like anticipatory remediation?
I mean, we knew that that area, because it was primarily invasives, and, you know, it was part of the restoration plan, you know, to remove that at some point, after permits were secured, you know, to remove it.
No permit was issued.
No, no permit was issued.
It's like saying, well, we know that, okay, it, we think that it's okay to build this building, and then the applicant goes ahead and builds it without building department approval, or without planning approval. And then comes back and says, well, you told me it was okay.
But we've had cases where that has happened.
I know.
And we told them, take it down. And we reached a compromise after that, they only took part of it down.
I'm just wondering, this is one of the, I don't mean to speak for you, but I remember when you first came on the board, there was, you had, you had made a comment about how we have all these regulations, but we so often accept mitigation, to the point where all of a sudden, the regulations don't mean much anymore. I know, I'm paraphrasing you, but I remember that, and that, and that actually hit home with me. And in this case, we're not talking about a mitigation, we're talking about forgiveness, twice. And I'm just not sure, I, I think that's, I mean, if we do, if we do this enough, then our zoning code has little standing. People can do what they like and come back, and what's the thing, it's better to, instead of asking permission, it's better to get forgiveness? Beg forgiveness? Thank you.
Can I say something about it?
Sure.
2015, we decided to clean the area of the present orchard. I have hired a professional landscaping company from Westchester, Newcastle. I got two or three different estimates to perform this kind of work. That happened in the spring of 2015. I was not aware of the situation of the wetlands, buffer zones, et cetera, et cetera, and permits needed, because I was under impression that landscaping contractor can do this kind of work, because they have their licenses from Westchester County. During the process of clearing that area, no trees were removed. We only removed invasive species that were overgrown for years. Property in the proximity of the creek on one side has been maintained with the nice short grass for years. All of this on the other side was overgrown, and this was an existing garden. We converted or brought back this existing garden to its former beauty. We planted 40, I believe, fruit trees, plus all the other bushes, and made gardens, some bed, gardening beds in that area, for our own usage. Mr. Coleman showed up at the side, and have not stopped the landscaping contractor, or prevented him from doing whatever he was told to do. We had a DEP inspector on the side, and have not issued any violation to the landscaping contractor while they were doing the work. They only advised them to put the silt fence around the wetland area. For, I believe, six or eight months, I have not received any official letter from town stating that I was in violation of the clearing that took place in this area. In the spring of 2016, I decided to clean, not clear, clean the brush and leftovers from Sandy and the previous owner. There are piles, I have images, I will show it to you at some point. There were piles of debris left along the wetland, and the neighbor on the other side. So we decided to clean that area, remove all the stumps, branches, and, and trees that were deposited there, before we become owners of the property. The following spring, this area, we had extensive conversations with zoning board, planning board, environmental board. I used my own, myself, I've been cleaning it myself, with the help of another family member. There was no tree cut down in this area as well, only invasive trees removed by hand. There was no machinery used, no excavation took place, it was all done by hand. Being penalized for that is kind of, I don't know, I think, very harsh, because our idea was from the beginning, not to damage anything, it was to improve the look of the property. Since this area was almost ready to be given the permit for construction, I decided to take that action in the spring of last year.
So, to the extent that the activity is benign, and maybe even helpful, maybe that goes into our consideration, but at the same time, there are specific conditions and criteria that go into activity in a wetland buffer, and the cleaning of a wetland buffer. And I understand that, for you, it was an eyesore, and a, a haven for animals that you didn't want to have on your property. But you, I don't think, and, I don't think that you should, just because you're the property owner and have that desire, should be the person who decides how to do that, and where to do that, and when to do that. I think that there's, that's why we have our experts, and we have our zoning codes to do that. So, that's my answer to, but, but I thought you knew that, because I thought you were told that you had to have a permit to do it, and you did it anyway. That's the point of a permit, is to have the town come in and be sure the activity is done properly.
Well, I have a curi, I have a question, Steve. Does, do the regs say that you can't do any activity in there, or it's just activity with machines? Or what's the connotation?
Based on some of the items, it regulates any removal of vegetation, you know, within a buffer, it doesn't specify whether it's by hand or mechanical. There is a, there is another item that, you know, has routine ground maintenance.
Exactly. That is a regulation about normal maintenance. I would consider it normal maintenance, not clearing.
In this case, I think it's, it's much more extreme of what was done, because it was total clearing, you know, and removal of existing vegetation that was present within, you know, the buffer area. Yes, a large percentage was invasive plant material, but I have no way of knowing how much was native vegetation within there, and, and even if, even with invasives, there's still, you know, there's still a lot of habitat function, water quality maintenance functions that were compromised because of, you know, the type of, you know, clearing that was done. I mean, if they would have come in front of, you know, applied for a permit, we would have, you know, provided them with some guidance on, you know, some species might have been beneficial to keep, others could have been removed, and then we would have, you know, worked with them to try to, you know, replant, or, you know, restore, to accomplish their objectives, and also maintain wetland function.
But is it accurate to state that, at this point, ERB is, is okay with putting a hold on this, because they're, again, they're anticipating some sort of remediation being, being processed here?
Yeah.
It seems to be the issue, but, but by the same token, I know it's been sold to us that we're doing all these, all this remediation. That would have to be done anyway. I mean, that's, whether you build a house on the same exact site, the same size, or anything else, as far as I see, all those things that are being offered, are being offered because they would have to be offered as part of the remediation for what's going on in the site.
What, what this does, is it leaves, it, it leaves, it leaves us, the town, with no, essentially, no authority. It's, it's, because if, it seems to me, if we follow through and say, well, it's already been done, therefore, whatever has been done needs to be remediated, why are we sitting here? I mean, I don't know what our purpose is here. If we send the message out by, and this is not the first time, and we have a couple other, other applications are going to be going through, what message do we tell them when they come before us? I, this is not, this is, this is, to me, it's a serious sort of issue of, of what we're here to do, and it's important how we do it.
I mean, because there was an application in front of the zoning board, you know, at the same time, I mean, we had a cooperative applicant in this case that was willing to, you know, review, you know, I mean, he retained, you know, consultants to help put together a mitigation plan that made sense, you know, to restore and enhance areas that were previously disturbed. You know, had there not been a zoning application, we would have treated it as a violation, and, you know, it would have gone through the environmental review process with the ERB.
I just find this especially egregious, because the applicant already knew, and had been told he needed a permit. I mean, fool me once, you know?
Yeah, and that's why I phrased it, is because, in this case, it was a little confusing, because it, first, it was an ERB application, and then determined, you know, that he needed planning board. And in that process, that's why, you know, I had asked the environmental board, and they said, well, you know, if, if this is going to be part of the mitigation, offer it to the planning board to say, are you comfortable with that direction? If you're not, then, you know, you know, let us know, and we will proceed with a violation and take it through that way.
So, you're leaving it up to us, rather than the ERB taking-
That's why I put it back in the March letter that I had submitted, you know, and we never really addressed it, because they were kind of indicating they were moving forward, and, you know, we were kind of, and so I don't think the decision was ever made, you know, other than the sense I got, is there was a willingness to try to work with, you know, with the applicant.
Well, I don't have any conclusion tonight on this particular subject, but I really think it should be something that we sort of look at each other and, and consider very seriously. Because, as I say, we have a couple of, already lined up coming before us on this very same issue. And if we don't draw the line somewhere, then it seems to me that we can never draw the line.
Yep, I think you raise a very good point. And I think it's, you know, I think it will be, at least for myself, part of the, you know, the equation that we consider as we, as we move forward on this application. It's, I, I think that's, it's, you know, I don't, I think what Tom raises is important in that, you know, just because someone does it, then we've, oh geez, we're sort of compelled to, to agree and give the permit. Not really.
No, not at all.
Not really. And so, again, I raised that in the very first comment, was, you know, just because this was before us briefly in April 2017, and beef cause has been approved by ZBA, this board has its own responsibilities and jurisdiction, and, and we look at it cleanly and de novo, based on, you know, what we're, what we're charged to do. So, look, we're not trying to cause conflicts with the ZBA, ERB, et cetera, but it's, it's what we have to do.
And I have no quarrel with the applicant wanting to take care of his property. They, they've been making some wonderful landscape improvements outside of the wetland buffer. But you presented us with a problem now, that I think that we need to, that we need to figure out how to deal with.
We have a memo from Sabrina, she's not here, but she did want to point out that this was a type-two application. And, and to the point that someone made earlier, I think Tom, it was you, and then I think, was echoed later on, she raises the point also that there's no need to have the two parking spaces, it's not required, for an accessory use. So, there's, there's certainly no reason to have two parking spaces there, you know, as required by the code. Is there anything else that Sabrina told you to say?
My answer to that would always be no.
Okay.
Number three.
Yep. Point three, yep. Okay, I think there's some work now for the applicant, and I, I would suggest that the applicant try to get scheduled with the ERB next, when you have some of your options looked at, some of the numbers done, and then we'll schedule you for a complete, continued informal, and, and go from there.
Okay, very good. All right. I'll contact Steve and discuss what we can-
Terrific. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, we move now to our next, this is an informal hearing for a new application. This is, Mahumdar?
Mahumdar.
Mahumdar, okay. Thank you, sorry. Mahumdar.
Actually, it's a public hearing, because it's a, it's the Random Farms Drive, that is only required to come to you, because it's a conservation subdivision, so those go automatically to public hearing. I did notice the public hearing.
You did, okay. So it's not an informal, this is a public hearing?
So do we need to open it?
Yeah, we have to have a motion then, to open the public hearing. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's your responsibility to do that.
Otherwise, the entire conversation is invalid.
Exactly.
Yes, that's right.
It's null and void.
Go home early instead.
Again, it sounds like home. Entire conversations are stripped from the record.
Hi, my name is Troy Wojcicki, engineer for the applicant's, the Mahumdars, 19 Random Farms Drive. This application is before the planning board, because it's located on a parcel that's in a conservation subdivision. The, the scope of the project's probably a little less dramatic compared to your last application. There we go. It involves the installation of an 18-by-40 in-ground pool, 845-square-foot adjacent patio, a hot tub, 190-square-foot second-story addition off the house, and a pool code fence along the property line that ties into the house. Stormwater management is also part of the project, located in the rear of the parcel. It's going to propose to include a rain, rain garden, and underground infiltrators. The soils on the property are very conducive to high infiltration rates, so stormwater management should be pretty straightforward on this project. The only colors you see on the plan, I wanted to focus on for the board, it's interesting, last I was before the board, was two, maybe three years ago, for the next-door neighbor's property, we did an in-ground pool and, and sports court. Same issue with respect to this property owner, the applicant purchased the property and it was clear, previously cleared beyond the approved clearing and grading limit line. The approved clearing and grading limit line is the orange dash line. And the green line along the rear that ties into a retaining wall is the edge of the lawn. One difference maybe compared to the last-
Was that the edge of the existing lawn?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. One thing that's different compared to the next-door neighbors' project that I did a few years ago is there are quite a few trees that were left rather than clearcutting to the property lines. You can see all the existing trees that are located in the rear property. So as you can see, our proposed pool and patio improvements are within the originally approved clearing and grading limit line. And as part of this project, what we're proposing is to restore a portion of that clearing and grading limit line to the purple that you can see, which is basically the rear yard setback line, you know, that we would restore beyond that purple line back to its original kind of not manicured lawn condition. We'd work with Mr. Coleman as far as how to do that, how to restore it. I did receive Bob and Sabrina's comment letters this morning. Bob's, I think, are pretty straightforward, all kind of technical comments related to the stormwater, which we'll run through, and I have no issue with any of his comments. And also, I think the mechanics of the clearing and grading limit line and how we would get that filed and recorded and all that. Sabrina's comment letter had two points I wanted to focus on. Her number four relates to the proposed rain garden and the stormwater management and whether it makes sense to move it on the end of the part of the clearing and grading limit line. I proposed it actually in the other, in the area that's going to be restored only because the rain garden's going to include that type of vegetation, you know, wetland-type vegetation, more natural situation. We would like to try to keep, you know, the area up to the purple, proposed purple line lawn. So that would just be, you know, we could certainly do it. And we tried to avoid, obviously, all the trees that we could with the coltech units and with the rain garden. But, you know, if the board doesn't like that idea, that's, you know, it's something we can consider moving. The second one comment that I wanted to address was her number five.
Coverage.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I made that mistake on purpose just to make sure Sabrina was doing her job, but-
That's easy for you to say when she's not here. But she does watch the tape.
Oh, she does.
No, she watches the tape.
There'll be a transcript she has.
Yeah, I know, I'm done. But that was an error, so we'll get that corrected and in pretty good shape as far as the coverage goes. That's it.
You got some comments?
Just looking at the proposed plan, where they have the stormwater facilities, there's a couple existing trees and it, my only question is they may want to modify, you know, the location to keep it out of the drip line of those existing trees. And then the proposed grading for the pool equipment and on the, I guess that would be the northern side, I think. There's some existing trees that also look like they would be impacted from grading, so I'd like to see them either look at tree protection, if it could be accomplished, or if it cannot be, then they should propose removal and then, you know, be subject to replacement.
Okay.
And so there's about five or six trees that seem to be impacted by that, so that would suggest they look at it. And the only other comment I had was the adjacent property is part of the Random Farm Homeowners Association and-
One to the south.
There's a wetland corridor system that goes through there and it would be helpful to just know whether the wetland buffer extends on to the existing parcel so they could approximate the, you know, location of the wetland boundary and, you know, see whether that actually encroaches within, you know, the property line.
Okay. I think would be helpful also, this is a conservation development. Can you show us the neighbors' homes and property lines? Because we have to see where this pool equipment's going to be placed, where the pool is. Again, this is a, you know, it's conservation development, so we want to make sure what the impacts are to neighbors. So it gets to the south, we have this easement, this conservation easement.
Correct.
But I think to the east and north, you might have some neighbors, and we should have those set forth on the map so we know what the distance is from the homes and what's in play.
Maybe I could prepare and exhibit that aerial and-
Well, I would say a map, really, that would, you know, this map that you have here, we should see the neighbors on here.
Okay, okay, we'll see what we can do with that.
Help me again, the purple line was the original clearing and grading limit line? The orange. All right.
Purple is the actual.
The original and the green is what we are now, right?
Green is actual, purple's proposed.
Okay.
You mean orange. Yeah. It's existing.
So, orange was what was approved, green is what's existing, actually. And purple is what's proposed, right, right.
Yeah, I mean-
So partial restoration.
Not quite, but, well, yeah, I guess it is.
It's very common out in random farms. It's very common in random farms to this occur, as you may know.
Yes.
The expanding line?
What's going on with the addition to the house? That we're looking at the pool and the patio but not the addition to the house in this application?
Second story?
Sure.
Yeah. It's very powerful. It's new.
Square right there, there's an existing patio in that location and they're adding a second-story addition, so it'll be a covered patio, and then it'll be an addition just for the second story off the bedroom, I understand.
And is that already figured into the development coverages that you've presented in your table?
Yes, it is.
So it's in the 7,525 for count, which is what, which is what was in-
It's a cement patio, I think. Is it a cement patio right now? What is it?
I think it's a cement patio.
So the second story doesn't really add anything to the-
It's a little larger.
It does to the FAR.
Yeah, and it is a little larger, the patio's not quite that whole squared off area.
All right.
So could that calculation be off also then?
I wondered.
Might be slightly.
Because it's a conservation development, are the development coverages less than what is allowed in the typical calculation in the town code?
In this particular subdivision, they didn't impose the 10%, 15%.
Before that time.
The time they did it was after the Chiselhurst subdivision. Cushing Herald, I'm sorry.
It was the Enlisi Rule.
No, this was well before that.
Okay.
So that would not apply.
Okay. Any comments from board members on it? Any comments from the public on this application?
I did want to point out that I think there might be some misstatements in the zoning conformance charts that are on sheet three in the maps and on page 15 of the site plan development, the site development plan application, because you show the front setback, the existing front setback as 62 feet and the proposed front yard setback at 115 feet. So I think something needs to be looked at there.
Yeah, what we typically do, and I usually have an asterisk, we show the setbacks to the pool and patio, the proposed improvements, you know, since we're not building a house or even really putting an addition on. But if it's confusing, we can just-
I think it-
Take that off.
I think it is confusing. And I think that may also apply to the side yard setback too.
Correct.
Where you've, yeah. And so it's that way on sheet three as well as in the narrative there.
Are we okay with the coverage expansion?
But what is the fencing treatment that you're proposing?
We usually do a black aluminum ornamental four-foot fence.
Okay, but not a chain link?
Correct, no, it's usually, I think it's usually aluminum or iron, black.
Black iron?
Yeah.
Like a wrought iron fence.
Yeah.
Square spindles, that kind of thing?
Correct. I'm okay with the coverage.
Okay.
I'm also okay with, for now, the proposed-
Revised clearing rating?
Yeah.
Purple.
Purple line, okay.
Better than the orange.
To be technical.
But you have, you have a, you're going to go back and look at either moving the infiltrators, you know, so they're not affecting the drip line of the trees that exist.
Yeah.
And are you taking out trees to put in the infiltrator?
We were proposing not to.
Not to, okay.
Yeah, they earlier said they located them to make sure they didn't mess with trees or tried to.
But maybe we're too close, so-
Yeah, it's pretty close to the drip line, I would say, as Steve says.
Yep, but if you get away from the drip line, well, then it's nice to feed the trees water and-
Yep, so Sabrina pointed out also, this was a type two action. Okay. I would propose that we continue the public hearing with a direction to staff to have a resolution ready with the corrections and changes and-
Yep.
Try to move it forward. Is that okay? We have a motion accordingly?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
When will that be though, Janice?
March 6th, deadline for submission is February 12th, I believe.
Is that okay?
So you're going to issue your clarifications to the town board and, you know, about the drip lines and about the chart and everything else by that time?
Oh yeah, we'll resubmit for the final there. Try to get my math right.
Okay, very good, thanks. I wouldn't hang around personally, bud. Thanks. See you, Troy. Okay. I seem to have piled it away. Okay, we move now to our next item. This is the ZBA referral, this is the Sunshine Children's Hospital. This is an application for a special permit amendment that's before the ZBA, 15 Spring Valley Road. So it's my understanding what we have before us is a referral back from the ZBA based on our proposal to them, which we wrote last fall, supporting the change in the location of the building and the elimination of that wing off to the northwestern corner, which we looked at. And I think the applicant agreed, we agreed, that the reduction to steep slopes was significant and positive. And I think that's really where we are, is it not, Jennifer? I mean, basically, it's either to echo that recommendation, support it, or give any sort of direction that we wish in connection with that, which is now before the ZBA. What the ZBA does across the board, I have no idea, but-
Right, that's correct, there's no application that's before you for approval or denial, it's simply opining on a referral back to the zoning board. And the referral essentially is the referral of the plan that you sent to the zoning board back in October. At your last meeting, at which this matter was on your agenda, you know, there was some discussion about site work that occurred at the property around Thanksgiving time. Since that time, town staff has done a very comprehensive, and consultants as well, has done a comprehensive investigation. You have some memos before you, I know the planning board expressed an interest in getting some information on that work. So that information is before you. You have a memo from the building inspector, Richard Polkary, a memo from the town's consulting hydrogeologist, Bill Cannavan, and I'm sure the applicant can provide you with details as far as their involvement in that investigation as well.
But the long and the short of what we have before us suggests that, as I understand it, correct me if I'm incorrect, is that the activities that took place on the site were not significant enough to trigger an application before this board. And that whatever was cleared in terms of trees fell within the tree ordinance, but that was something that could be taken care of at the staff level. Steep slopes were not sufficiently impacted to trigger the need for an application. There was a building that was demolished. And it's my understanding that that is a demolition issue that's before the building department, it was before the building department, however they're handling it. But at this point, you know, we were concerned that there might be a level of activity that would trigger a new wetland application or need for a new wetland application, a new tree clearing ordinance, application or steep slopes. So as I understand it, and again, maybe you should put it legally and properly, we don't have that, are those chickens?
No.
What is that?
Inside there, something's making noise in there.
Wow, okay. It's my understanding that we don't have that level of activity, but correct me if-
Right, so the result of the staff's review is that there were actually three permits from the town that were required as a result of the work. One was a tree removal permit for one 18-inch DBH tree. That also required a tree replacement plan showing four two-and-a-half inch replacement trees. A demo permit was required for the removal of the shed housing for well house number, for well number one. And also, a building permit was required to install a retaining wall to prevent possible erosion of the slope adjacent to the shed that was removed. But the slopes that were disturbed did not meet the threshold for triggering review by this board. It's also the opinion that the work that was performed at the site did not impact any of the approvals that you have previously issued for this, for the site. As far as steep slopes, tree removals, wetlands, and storm waters concerned.
What's the status of those permits at this point before the town?
They have been issued at this point.
So the applications have been filed, they've been reviewed and-
Review has been undertaken and the permits were granted, correct, and issued.
All right. Any questions or issues? So, I mean, in terms of our work tonight on this, it's a matter of, again, looking at the referral that we sent off to the ZBA on the second shot back, the second volley back. And I think we, do we have that, did we have that draft sent to us? This pile that arrived at 5:30?
Yes, it should be in that pile. The original, the original memo from October-
There was a memo provided from, to the zoning board, from the planning board, from October 17, 2017. And this was your memo to the zoning board when your board approved the environmental permits and the applicant-
Right, right.
Returned to the zoning board for the amended special permit.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Issue a memo, draft, instruct staff to draft a memo echoing these recommendations that we support these, or not?
You went ahead.
Yep, okay.
It was our recommendation to begin with.
Kind of, yes, we proposed it, so it's, would be interesting not to propose it at this point and not support it, it seems to me. Are you okay with that?
Yep, I am.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Did I word it properly?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just wrestling with the stack of stuff that got dumped on our desk at 6:30. That doesn't factor into anything from what I'm understanding? I just don't know what the process is here.
The board, at the last meeting, that this was on the agenda, the board had asked for information about the staff's investigation into the site work that occurred over there.
I understand, my point is, I got this tonight at 7 o'clock, so I haven't read this big stack, so maybe I'm looking for guidance, Jennifer.
You might be looking for a little bit more than guidance, I've made this complaint before. It apparently goes nowhere.
It's just tough getting, when you walk in here, you sit here at 6:45, you get this whole new stack of literature, and you don't have time to digest it and make a clear decision, so I'm just, I'm at a crossroads.
Especially when I'm retired, so I have the leisure of like, you know, spending, you're probably on your way home.
I was, I go from work to here, so I don't have two seconds to check stuff, so. I was, I go from work to here, so I don't have two seconds to check stuff, so I'm just stuck.
Is it incorrect to describe the material, some of the materials that we received today is, I think a lot of it was addressed to the ZBA as well as us, but I think it's fair to say that, you know, we don't have an application before us. Whatever we did, we have approved applications.
Agreed.
We closed public hearings before we did all that.
Agreed.
It's.
Is this an FYI?
I think legally, it's an FYI.
This is an FYI, but I don't think that, I mean, to me, that doesn't mean that you'd give it to us at the last minute. And there are more, there are more items in my email inbox at the last minute than just this one on other applications. And this is an internal matter to us. It's something that we may decide to discuss or not discuss to see if we agree on it, but we don't, I don't think we need to address it now with, in front of these applicants who are here for their own purposes. But I agree with you.
Okay. Does that?
So, yeah, I mean, in terms of guidance, I mean, this is, this is an FYI. It's in response to your questions from the last meeting as far as what the town did, has done with respect to the investigations of the site work. It's the building inspector's summary of actions taken by the building inspector, the town engineer, the town environmental coordinator, who are here tonight and can answer any questions about, obviously, the building inspector's not here, but can answer any questions about what was performed. The town's consulting hydrogeologist also performed site visits, reviewed information, documentation, and has issued his own separate memo with respect to the well work that was performed at the property.
Unless I'm mistaken, none of that has anything to do with our permits?
That is, based on the comments and the statements in those memos, that is the conclusion of your staff and your consultants, that at the end of the day, the investigation resulted in no action being necessary by this board on any of the work that was done.
So if the Thanksgiving event never occurred, this would just be the normal process of we making recommendations to zoning board, zoning board coming back to us, we going back.
It's like it never happened, essentially.
But they did happen.
I understand that.
And they begged for forgiveness. I'm sorry.
If you want to, no. Excuse me, if you're gonna interject, we'll give you time at the microphone.
I don't know what the status of public comment is.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna take public comment because it's really, there is no need for public comment. We don't have an application before us. It's simply an administrative internal referral. So I mean, I understand that.
My name is William Wedge. I'm a resident chap for many years.
Are we taking public comment?
The point, sir, is that Mr. Curley was speaking very abusively at the beginning of two applicants before about the abrogation of municipal authority. Every time you let something slip in terms of a permit, you give up the authority that we citizens confer on you to regulate development.
Now, I have to stop, let me just interrupt, because we understand that completely. Our point is, this is not within our authority.
Well, there are people smarter than me here who think you do have some authorities, and they would like to express them.
We, okay, we have legal counsel who advises.
And I'd like to also say that Ms. Gray has misrepresented what the building department has put on your desk at 7:30 or at 6:30 for this meeting. It is not a comprehensive review of the actions that went on in the dark of night and in Thanksgiving weekend. It's a hack job. It is a put-together of the applicant's materials regurgitated under town letterhead and keen and bean letterhead. I think it's really worth your time to look at what your staff is giving you, because what your staff is giving you is crap. Honesty, Frank.
Excuse me, but, you know, we're not on CNN or anything like that. Excuse me.
This is broadcast, and I think the town should hear. People who are watching this should hear this.
Okay. Then, thank you.
You're welcome, because I think you're being mis-served by your staff.
We got it.
And I think it's clearly important, what Mr. Curley said about you ceding municipal authority. These people have repeatedly violated, done work without permits, violated town code, and they get the pat on the back, attaboy, go for it. And you have authority, and I suggest that you listen to people here who have information for you.
We have, we have the information.
No, you, yes, but you should act on it.
We have the information.
You should just refer it back. You have the, you can act, you can serve the town, you cannot abrogate your responsibility.
We know what our responsibilities are, thank you.
Well, I'm reminding you of them, sir.
With all due respect, the town staff has spent, I can attest, countless, countless hours, days reviewing the information as a result.
Please, don't interrupt.
They performed independent site visits.
Sir, sir.
Can we get somebody to escort him out of here?
We can, we can have somebody take you out if you like.
You're out of order, so you must leave.
Apologize.
No, you're out of order, please. You must leave. I'll call the police if you have to, but you must leave.
You want me to go down?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, get an officer in here.
We're not moving, so please.
Get an officer in here.
It's inappropriate. In any event, what we have before us, it seems to me, and I think what we heard from counsel, is an administrative issue right now. I was just looking at the memo that we put together in October 17. I don't see where there's anything that's changed from what we understand that would impact what we recommended, which was the change in that northwestern portion of the building.
I don't, I don't see any changes. The only comment that I'd like to make is that the applicant was careless in what they did. And if it had been anything more, then, you know, the whole project would be endangered. I mean, it just, it was unnecessary to do that. Just unnecessary. But I don't believe it's in our purview.
It's not in our purview for, I think, a number of reasons, which is we don't have those policing powers, where that is left up to the town and staff, and we don't, we don't have an application before us. So it's a matter of our code, kind of a quirk in our code that came back to us, with this kind of like this volley back to us. So it's, you know, it's, I understand that there's angst and disappointment and issues and concerns. This is not the place for those. And in my judgment, the proper place at this point is where it is, and that's in the courts. So it's in the courts, and let the courts decide it. So anyway, I would propose that we set a motion to direct staff to update the memo and echo the support that we gave back in October 17.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we move now to a discussion item. This is an item regarding, we talked about this before, and I think we have a meeting scheduled for the second meeting in February for transition zones. And I know Sabrina drafted something, but I thought we would want to be a little bit stronger on this and try to enlist the support of the town board now and really make it a priority and get it going, rather than like just see what happens.
Janet, this was, the second version was the one you gave us this evening, right?
Yes, that's the second version.
I liked.
He hit me in the chest.
Silly.
He's giving him trouble.
He hit me in the chest, leaving.
Wow.
That's just silly.
He needs to see someone.
Yep. So anyway, no pride in authorship, but I don't know if folks had time to look at it, but I don't think it has to be all that artistic, but I think we should just get this out to the town board.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What? I'll do with this.
It's not artistic?
And you.
I said it doesn't have to be artistic. I didn't say it wasn't.
I thought the revised version's fine.
Yeah, I like that we're presenting it as a, that was something that we think is a priority.
Yeah, pushing it a little bit.
As an item that.
I agree totally.
I'm trying not to be obnoxious in 2018, but, you know, I figured I would push it a little bit.
It's very polite.
Okay. So do we have a motion then to adopt this?
Motion.
This draft? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who moved?
Motion.
Okay. And we have minutes.
How many minutes?
For the revisions that we looked at, and I guess the folks submitted changes to Janice after, during the holidays. So I think she's incorporated those in here in the April 20 of 2017 minutes. These were the minutes regarding our discussion about the comprehensive plan.
So can I make a couple of?
Sure.
Suggestions here, because?
Yep.
This makes me sound like me at my very worst, which is pretty bad. So I'd like to make a couple of changes. I mean, I know what I thought I said or meant to say, but sorry, I think I'm outright. First page, line 64, very bottom. And if Newcastle wants to, not to be the town that it currently is, but wants to maintain its bucolic character, that seems to be the operative word. We might as well use it.
Yeah.
Next page, first line, it was, me again, it was his belief that no one in this community was ever able to handle, that's not, that's not right. It was his belief that few in this community have been able to hand their homes over to their children. And it says he opined. I'm gonna have to get a pipe if I'm opining. So if we could just say he suggested, this is not the town's responsibility, and strike, and it was just the way, and in certain stead, rather, it's the nature of the economy, how the economy works in Westchester County, or a nature, the nature of the economy in Westchester County. Next, town's responsibility, next line should be objective. And then line six, just strike for the purchaser rent that was affordable for these people. And that's that. Sorry. Nope, that's it.
Okay. Greg, anything?
Nope.
Anyone else anything? If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of April 20, 2017 as amended?
So moved.
So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have the minutes of December 19, 2017.
I had one small change on page one, line 50. Instead of saying this variety, just the variety.
Mm-hmm, okay. You know, when I go through these minutes, Bob, did they come back? For example, on page, this is just a question really in terms of follow-through. Page two, lines 50 through 53, we had, did they actually come back at 91 Bedford and come, are they putting the air conditioners up on the roofs, or what are they doing in terms of that tight area that's within, on what, the southern border?
No human contact? They have not contacted you?
Okay.
All right.
You mean, they're the ones that were more for the commercial basis?
Yeah, right on the commercial basis.
I don't think we ever landed where they were going. We asked them to get them off the ground and maybe put them on.
Well, we, they have to do a noise study, and that will tell us if they have to move them or not, but it seemed to me that.
Well, we suggested we didn't demand.
Yeah.
I had a discussion with Bill Spade at the counter last week, and he indicated they were proceeding with the noise analysis to determine which strategy made sense.
But I thought for the units on the south side of the building, since we were thinking about when that transition zone goes, that, hey, guys, why don't you put those units someplace else? But I don't ever think we ever made them do it.
Well, I think, I think it's gonna work out that way, because it's so close to the property line, and you have to maintain a certain decibel level at the property line that I think de facto it's gonna have to go up on top of the roof.
Yeah. Which is okay.
Yeah, that should be good.
We haven't done anything with our, of course, it's been snowing, our January walk, huh, at Lamonie. Is there any talk about?
Well, this weekend is gonna be like, you know, summer.
I have an environmental board meeting on next Monday, and I was gonna get some dates from them and then I'll send an email to see if we can do something hopefully in February.
Do we have anything from Barry Schwartz yet in terms of mappings?
Nothing, no, nothing as far as.
Yeah, Brad Schwartz emailed me on Friday, Friday, looking for some dates.
Is that the site where they did all that work?
Staff is working on coordinating that for February.
More stuff to save.
At Tom's point earlier, that we did issue violations, you know, at that site.
I'm going to invest in storage.
Any other issues or questions on these minutes?
Nah, they're lovely.
That's a comment. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I guess we're, we're done. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
But I just had one comment.
Oh.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the well wishes during my absence, and I'm recovering well, and I also want to acknowledge Bob and thank him for, I think he's got a due appreciation for trees and wetlands than he previously did.
I tried, I tried my best. Certainly not an arborist, but I tried my best.
Steve, I'm sorry, I know you got burnt until this evening.